Yes, you're live. Go ahead.
Let's call this Planning Commission meeting December 7th to order. Could staff please do roll call?
Mr. Paul Wagaman.
Present.
Philip Combs.
Present.
Lynn Larson is absent at this time. Brian Parsons, absent. Robert Estrada. Don Daniels, absent. Ryan Pearson.
Here.
Vice Chair, you do have quorum.
Thank you. Before us, we have the minutes from November 2nd, 2022, looking for a motion.
Make a motion. We accept the minutes as written.
Wagaman made the motion.
I'll second.
Combs, second. Any discussion or changes? Seeing none. All those in favor by saying aye.
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 Aye. Extentions? Minutes passed as written. Any changes to our agenda?
No, Mr. Chair.
Okay, thank you. Moving along to public comment. I don't see anyone here. Do we have anyone online that wishes to speak about any topics?
No, Mr. Chair.
No public, we don't have a public hearing today. Moving unfinished business, we do not have any unfinished business. So down to number eight, new business. The 2024 Comprehensive Plan Periodic Review Process.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. We actually do have tonight for you two different presentations. We're going to start with Ms. Liz Underwood-Boltman, who is from the Puget Sound Regional Council, and then the Public Works Director for Lakewood, the Mr. Paul Bucic, and we're going to be talking transportation tonight in relation to the 2024 periodic review. So Liz, if you're ready, go ahead.
Great. Thank you so much for having me. First, can you hear me?
Yes, go ahead.
We're good? Okay, perfect. All right, let me pull up my presentation here. Great. Hopefully that's working okay. Really appreciate you having me present tonight. I'm going to talk a bit about the Growth Management Act, transport, regional transportation planning requirements, the context of your comprehensive plan. I am Liz Underwood-Boltman. I'm a principal planner with PSRC's Growth Management Group. So I work on our Plan Review and Certification Program. So maybe a way of caveat, I am not a transportation planner by trade, but certainly happy to talk about some of the regional planning as well as the Growth Management Act work on transportation planning. So I think you've had previous presentations that have talked about some of the regional planning context. So we have Vision 2050, which is our regional growth plan. Includes a number of different policies that direct local and regional planning work. So prior to Vision 2050, we had Vision 2040. So that Vision 2040 really informed Lakewood's last comprehensive plan. So I'm going to try to highlight some of the things that may have changed since the last plan update, things you might want to think about as part of this, this bit of work. So like Vision 2040, though, our current regional plan really focuses, continues to focus on providing a safe and connected multimodal transportation system that helps to link major centers as well as help support the growth that we're expecting into the future with our regional growth strategy. Compared to Vision 2040, where there were some sort of modest changes in terms of some new policy addressing stormwater and the environmental impacts of our transportation system, electrification and emissions reduction, so some, that intersection with climate, as well as changing transportation technology and aviation capacity in the region. So compared to other parts of Vision, fairly limited set of changes, but, and so a lot of consistent policy in terms of what we're thinking about when it comes to transportation planning. Compared to also the last local comprehensive plan update, we have also updated our regional transportation plan. So we adopted a new regional transportation plan back in May, and really the objectives of this particular plan update were to continue to make progress on existing challenges like regional mobility. I mentioned climate, safety, as well as just sort of keeping up with growth in the region overall, and really trying to address both our current as well as the future needs of our transportation system. We also, with this particular plan update, sought to provide better data and analysis to help support local planning. I'll talk about it a little bit more in a minute, but we developed a visualization tool that provides more local data about some of the assets and resources in our transportation system, and was the other objective just generally to provide and plan for the long-term needs for our transportation system. The Growth Management Act has a number of different requirements related to transportation planning. It's compared to other elements, the plan is one of the more technical elements. I'm not sure what the approach the city is going to have, but a lot of cities hire consultants to help support this work because there are a lot of technical components and analysis as part of this particular element. But the transportation plan includes an inventory of what assets and resources that you already have within your current transportation system, a bicycle and pedestrian component. So what, what existing assets as well as future needs you may have in terms of bike and ped work, level of service standards. So what are your expectations in terms of service of, of your facilities into the future? We also look at travel forecasting. So based on the growth that you're expecting for your city overall, how much, what kind of impacts is that going to create and requirements in terms of new investments for your transportation system? Also looks at transportation demand management. So how do we kind of reduce the number of trips overall and help people sort of shift out of cars? So to help sort of support overall mobility of the system, as well as just understanding what needs you'll have into the future as well as how you'll pay for them. So a lot of different requirements around transportation planning. Since the last plan update, there really haven't been any changes so far at the state level that would, that change requirements as part of transportation planning. So a lot of, you know, just needing to keep up and understanding what your local policy direction might take you. All of that is tends to be, is supported by goals and policies in your plan around what some of the priorities are, how that helps inform what your investments should be. So what kind of outcomes you'd like to see in terms of transportation planning? So it's kind of just a sense overall of what some of the big requirements are. Transportation is a key component of PSRC's Plan Review and Certification Work. So we look at transportation requirements from the Growth Management Act, which I kind of just outlined, as well as consistency with the regional transportation plan. So one of the big parts of our regional transportation plan is this project list that of like all the big investments that are happening in the region. So looking for consistency between your local plan and kind of what the region's expecting, as well as the policy direction as part of Vision 2050. So lots of kind of different intersecting requirements around what we look for in terms of certification with regard to transportation. We really encourage that, that the transportation element should reflect all modes throughout. That's kind of the, just general expectation of the Growth Management Act. But when it comes to the inventory of like what you have, as well as what you're sort of expecting into the future in terms of providing resources and systems for growth, how you maintain the system, as well as, you know, any safety issues, projects, and what your financial plan is. So really encouraged thinking about kind of the multimodal components of your transportation system. I won't go into this, I think into too much detail, but we are working on some additional guidance to help support plan updates. One thing we've seen from around the region is cities have some different project lists in terms of some include some types of investments and not others. So I'm really just trying to encourage a little bit more consistency to help really tell a sort of more complete story of like all the investments that cities are making. But don't need to go into this in too much detail, I think, for this group. As part of this update, it's really a great opportunity to help coordinate with other agencies and coordinate with WASHDOT as well as transit agencies to understand what the needs are and what their, what planned projects are happening within the community as well as nearby, as well as coordinating with your neighbors about projects that might require some interjurisdictional partnerships. I think, as everyone knows, we sort of are looking for a seamless system. You don't want to encounter city boundaries when it comes to transportation. So really important moment to sort of look at kind of inner, inner coordination, intergovernmental coordination and consistency. There are a number of resources that can help support the update. The Washington State Department of Commerce has a really helpful element guide that sort of talks through various different requirements and gives examples from what other communities have done. The Municipal Research and Services Center, if you're also, if you're interested in what, what transportation elements look like in other communities, has a, I think, helpful compendium of some other examples around the state and around the region. WASHDOT also has a community planning portal, which provides a lot of data about state routes within your community as well as nearby. So it's kind of an interesting just portal to sort of look around, kind of even just beyond your community, but it's a helpful resource, I think, overall. I've mentioned as part of our regional transportation plan that we developed this regional system visualization tool. I can make sure that Tiffany, I think, has the link to that, but includes a lot of data about existing and future conditions within the region. So I think also helpful to look at kind of your own community, but also helpful to look at neighboring communities, just some of the, the basics of kind of what they're seeing and planning for into the future. Both vision and transportation talk, and the transportation plan talk about the importance of equity as well as climate. So I think both of those are really helpful in terms of providing some more kind of regional context about some of those issues and how that could be addressed through transportation. We also have a new tool, our Resilience and Hazards Map, that talks about some of the natural hazards that might occur and how that, you can sort of think about that in sort of the context of your own local plan. We also have a community or profiles that pulls data from both the census as well as some other resources for each community and each county in the region. So includes some data about things like car ownership, as well as some of the projects, demographics, as well as the projects that are in our regional plan that are in your local community. I just checked this earlier tonight, and we've been having a hard time getting this tool to stick on the internet, but I can send you the link to it. I think it's down for the moment, but hopefully will back up very soon. So I think it can be a nice helpful tool, kind of beyond just the transportation element, to think about demographics in your community, once it's back online. And actually, that's it. I know I went through the, there's a lot of different data, lots of different resources that are, exist. But we would be, are certainly happy and available to help as the city has, or as you have questions along the way through this, through this plan update process. And I'm happy to take any questions.
Thank you. Do we have any questions? Mr. Estrada?
So who do I talk to about the idea of a new equivalent I-5 north and south as part of the transportation?
Well, that, that sounds like a big project. I think that that's a good project to sort of start through, I think, locally. I think it's, it's a good, I think the transportation element sort of, you know, thinking just broadly is a good opportunity to think about like what you might want in terms of state investments or transit investments. It's a good place to start in terms of, you know, if there are local needs that kind of bubble up along the way. But I-5 would obviously be a big undertaking.
Anything else?
Right.
Wagaman?
Yeah. You didn't touch on it a whole lot about airports, but that's one of the things that shows up in the news. You know, they want to put a new airport. Are we trying to give some thought leadership to people ahead of time? To me, you know, they, they're doing some things up at Payne Field, so that's the other end of C-TAC. When you, when you come down this way to, to tear up ground down here and put a new airport in Pierce County somewhere, from my perspective, doesn't make a lot of sense when we, we've got McCord, you know, and so have we thought about doing a joint venture, you know, civilian military? But then, you know, as I given more thought to that, it seems to make more sense to go to Olympia. You know, it, it's about equidistant between C-TAC and Olympia as it is up to Payne Field. And, and now you have people on the other side of the sound that can come down to Olympia. And now, I know the runways aren't very long in Olympia, but there could be some things done there. So what are your thoughts on that area?
It's a good, it's a good question. I don't want to speculate too much because it's definitely not my area of expertise. But so PSRC did an aviation baseline study a few years ago that looked at aviation capacity in the region. So what all the existing facilities are and what some of the projected needs are into the future. And it's really the state's response role, and they're, they have a commission working on this right now, kind of like I trying to identify what to do about capacity statewide as well as in the region. So I think they're going through a process of trying to identify what are some potential locations. I think, we, I think as an organization, we are on the committee, but we're not necessarily, it's not a decision-making thing that, that PSRC is responsible for right now. Certainly, from what I've read, there's a lot of community interest in this. And so I think we're going to see kind of where the state process plays out. I'm sure there will be a lot of opportunities to kind of wrestle with some of those issues. But yeah, I think lots of questions about kind of like, how do you address capacity into the future? But, you know, obviously, a lot of existing questions around kind of, you know, how much something like that would cost and location and all those big things. So I'm definitely not an expert on this, on this area. So it's, I think it's more of kind of a regional and statewide issue versus something that you would probably want to pursue in your local plan.
Okay, so it, it, so I guess one of the other things I would bring up is to try and move people around. I mean, we, we, we're kind of in a choke point with I-5 going north-south, right? And, you know, you, so you talked about some of those things already tonight. With tilt rotor technology and aviation, that seems to be a way we could move people, you know, certainly if Payne Field, you know, continues to pick up, we got C-TAC, Boeing Field, and then if we did something down south here, whether that be Olympia or wherever, tilt rotor, moving people back and forth seems, from my perspective, to make a lot of sense to move people around. You know, I, I guess I'm not, I'm just making the comment, not asking you to really respond back, but I would like you to respond back on Cross Base Highway. Is that totally dead? Or now that we've got the overpass at Thorn Lane, does it make sense to finish that off so that people on the east side can get to the freeway quicker?
It's a great question. I think Tiffany might have better information than I do about that.
Is it all right?
Yep.
So, Mr. Wagaman, what's happened with Cross Base Highway? It has been taken off of regional planning documents, and there is no funding for it at this point. It's essentially considered a dead project. And with the I-5 improvements that have happened now tying into 512 and then further south and over, the thought is, let's take a look at how this performs over the next however many years. But if, and when a new east-west corridor is discussed, it's not going to be Cross Base Highway location. And actually, right now, right where the beginning of it would have been, on the west side of the county headed east, is where they're talking about putting the chronically homeless Pierce County Village. It's right at that same spot. So the thought process at this point is no Cross Base Highway.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. I had just one question that sprung up. I, I've, and just because I was recently at C-TAC and the lines were out into the parking garage. Is, do you know, is C-TAC like, is it at capacity or is that just like a personnel, they don't have enough people to get in there to get people through situation rather than like, because they've been doing lots of improvements and it's quite nice. But do you have any idea, you know, is it at capacity or is it, you know, is that an issue or is it just a staffing issue?
I think it's a, it's a great question. I'm, I'm not, not my, my area of expertise. I think the aviation baseline study looked at this issue of demand and kind of where we have facilities and was projecting kind of that C-TAC would sort of be kind of approaching capacity, which is why we kind of need to look elsewhere at sort of other, potentially other options or look at Payne Field and what other facilities can provide for us. So I can definitely provide that particular report back to you. I don't know exactly about some of, all the, all the underworkings of, of C-TAC though, right now.
Okay, thanks.
Anything else?
Thank you.
Oh, you have any?
Thank you, Liz, very much for your time.
For your presentation. Appreciate it.
Yeah, thank you.
So our next presentation, as I mentioned before, is our Public Works Engineering Director, Mr. Paul Bucic.
Good evening. To help spike the cover off my camera, sorry about that. So tonight, I want to talk to you about transportation, what we're doing in the city of Lakewood in the past, present, and in the immediate near future. So let me share my screen with you. There we go. Let's talk about the transportation activities in the city of Lakewood. I think that you're going to see a lot of what if I'm presenting to you lines up well with what the previous speaker was talking about from PSRC's perspective, on what they want local jurisdictions to do. So looking into the past, I want to point out that since 2015, the city of Lakewood has constructed, I think, a little more than 72 transportation improvement projects right now, over $103 million. These projects include pavement preservation, pavement overlays, street improvements, sidewalk construction, traffic signal improvements, installations, neighborhood safety and LED streetlights. In the last couple of years, we have completed some major projects. We did an overlay of Silicon Boulevard from Weller to Custer. We did an overlay of 108th from Bridgeport to Pack Highway. We constructed 111th, 112th Street roadway in partnership with Sound Transit. We constructed improvements on Lakewood Drive from Silicon Boulevard to Slet Creek. We completely rebuilt Veterans Drive. That project included construction of a shared use path for bike peds as well as sidewalk on the opposite side and roundabouts to help improve traffic flow at the same time slow people down. We completed the Gravel Lake Drive improvements from Nianta through Veterans Drive up to Washington Boulevard. We've gone a little further than when I prepared this. We've installed three new roundabouts, and we're working on Washington Boulevard right now. We've improved 110th and Lakewood Drive with new signal and sidewalks. We've done a significant amount of chip sealing in the Lake City neighborhood, and we also constructed a new sewer out in the Silicon area. In 2022, we have been doing quite a bit of work. We have put out a contract for new LED streetlights in areas that have no streetlights. We've completed our roadway striping, chip sealing, and pavement patching contract on pavement patching. Normally, we would spend about $150,000 annually. This past year, we spent $350,000 on pavement patching because with the previous winter, we had a lot of problems pop up. We have completed our JBLM Phase 1. That, that Phase 1 work is what I was speaking to a moment ago. It goes from almost Pack Highway up Gravel Lake Drive, the new roundabout at Nianta, the new roundabout, all new road improvements up to Veterans, the new roundabout at Washington Boulevard, and the new roundabout at Interlockin. The Phase 2 project is underway right now. We've completed a complete, completed a redo, complete new road on North Gate and Edgewood with a roundabout at North Gate and Edgewood and a new roundabout at Edgewood and Washington Boulevard. Those were recently opened up right before the Thanksgiving holiday. And currently, right now, the contractor has taken down the signal at Vernon and Washington Boulevard. That will be another new major roundabout. And we will be completing from there all the way to Interlockin and then have torn out all of Vernon, where it intersects with Washington Boulevard to Kendrick, almost to Veterans Drive. On Washington Boulevard, we'll be installing roundabouts at every intersection because we're putting in a center median. And so people will be a right-in, right-out from their homes. There'll be no more left turn posing traffic to get to their homes or crossing traffic. We are designing bicycle paths on that major road from North Gate all the way to Washington and Gravel Lake Drive, where it transitions back over into shared use paths. The JBLM Phase 1 and Phase 2 together amass over almost $20 million worth of construction activity. We've received $7 million of TIB grant funding for that work. The rest of it is being funded by local funds. The South Tacoma Way overlay from approximately Pack Highway down, cross over towards 112th Street has been recently completed. And Silicon Boulevard, we are finalizing the work to install sidewalks from Weller to Custer. We are in the process right now of installing a wall off of the side of the road so that we can actually finish some of those sidewalks. We completed our work on 59th Street between 100th and Bridgeport by installing, finally installing the sidewalks on the east side of that road. 2022, we also completed work and construction of a new auxiliary parking lot for American Lake Park. When we did the Veterans Drive project, we identified that we were basically eliminating all the guerrilla parking that people had been taking advantage of for many years, for decades, all along the sides of the road. While that was good for people to be able to access the park, it wasn't so good for all the residents who live along that route because they were having people parking truck, trailer, and cars in front of their mailboxes, in front of their driveways, et cetera. When we constructed the Veterans Drive project with the shared use path and the regular sidewalk, we knew we were taking away all of that parking. So we approached city council and they agreed for us to pursue the acquisition of a corner lot. And it's a pretty good-sized lot, and we constructed another, I think it was 13 truck, trailer, boat trailer parking stalls and another, I think it was 20-some regular car parking spots. Plus, we also had improved the American Lake itself parking lot and added another 40, some parking stalls in there. We've completed the Phillips Road sidewalk. So now if you want to walk from the Oak Brook neighborhood along Phillips Road, you have a safe walking path to get from Onyx all the way down to Silicon Boulevard. We've actually completed the loop. So you can go down 87th up to, up to the sidewalks on Onyx, walk down Onyx all the way to the east to get to Phillips and walk back down. So you have access not only for exercise, but to the schools as well as the shopping. And you can safely do that without getting into the road itself. We're completing design for Silicon Boulevard from 87th to Weller. That is a fully funded project. We're probably going to be a little bit later than we expected because we ran into some, some snags on the design process. But we're also looking at what we're going to do from 87th to Far West. Originally, the intention of the city was to build sidewalks on the north side of Silicon Boulevard. At the time that was being proposed, believe it or not, that was 10 years ago. And then grant funds came in for doing design and right-of-way acquisition. Since then, Western State Hospital has come along with a master plan for improving Western State Hospital. As a part of that, we stipulated that it's their responsibility to do the frontage improvements. We received grant funds for constructing the rest, the remaining of the sidewalks on the west side of Far West Drive from Silicon Boulevard all the way to 112th. That's under design, constructed next year. On Hipkins from Silicon Boulevard to 104th, we have construction dollars and design dollars. We'll be building that in 2023. The Ardmore and Whitman 93rd area, those three roads, will be building those out so they have curb cutter sidewalk, new roads, street lighting, et cetera. That will be at completion so that people who live and work in the Oak Brook area, that part of the city, not just Oak Brook, that part of the city, will now have a safe, a non, non-motorized pathway to get to Colonial Plaza, to the downtown, to transit. We also have a grant we're working on for installing a new signal at 84th and Pond. We also have a grant we're working on for installing a new signal at Eighty-Fourth and Pine and sidewalks up Pine to connect to the Tacoma Water Trail. We also have a grant we're working on right now that we'll be constructing in next year for new sidewalks on one hundred and twelve by Clover Park High School from Bridgeport down a couple of blocks. And then the last thing that we're doing design and preparing for construction is a new route. Uh, we're pretty excited about this. We pitched to the Transportation Improvement Board last year that we would like to build sidewalks on Eighty-Seventh right in front of the Forest Silicon Park and then a new shared use path within the right-of-way, but it's outside of Elwood because the right-of-way is very wide. So it'll be a nice meandering path to get from Eighty-Seventh through the pasture area, prairie area, and then the trees to get down to Angle Lane. Angle Lane will have a new sidewalk on the south side of it that will take them all the way down to tie into Hipkins. And we're actually going to be building the Angle Lane, Elwood, Eighty-Seventh with Hipkins as um one project so that we can coordinate with the contractor and what's going to be done. On the new entrance to Forest Silicon Park, I just kind of let let you in on the secret there. We're going to be proposing to council next Monday for a roundabout uh that will clean up that intersection there, getting into the park. It will also provide a pathway for cyclists and pedestrians to get through there safely and onto the shared use path. We have a series of other projects you can see here that are going to keep us busy, design, design, sign all the way down. On the one, which is the Union Avenue, taking it to thirty percent, we were notified on Friday through the Transportation Improvement Board grant application that we've been awarded a half million dollars to build the sidewalks on the south side of Union where they're currently missing and to tie in with what the straight state recently did for us. So that's pretty exciting, and that's going to be moving along here pretty quick. We also have recently been told by Pierce County that three of our sewer projects um were accepted for ARPA grant funding. I'll show you those in just a minute here. So what does that mean overall to the city? And if you see this, you'll see that the red are projects that are already funded. And in one case, up here on on Phillips, that's already recently been constructed. And then the design projects where we either have thirty percent funding or we've got funding to move them along further, those are the ones in green. Chip seal area that we've recently completed in purple, same with the asphalt patch. And then we're looking at the asphalt patch area for the twenty-three and twenty-four areas. We have them laid out. We just need to make sure that we've got appropriate funding to do as big of an areas we're looking for. Long term, what what does all this mean? How does this complete the non-motorized connectivity plan for the city of Lakewood? So last fall, we went back to the city council and we presented this information to them. Everything you see in blue has some form of a sidewalk, whether it's on one side or both sides, but it's a safe way for people to get around the city. What was missing to us as a part of the backbone are those areas in red and the light green. Now, the light green are the funded projects. As I said before, the Phillips project is now completed. And then we have funding for the Silicon Boulevard project up off of Hipkins, uh between Eighty-Seventh and Weller, and we have funding for Far West. But if you took the red away, what would reveal is that we have components of our system that were missing. So we pitched to the city council that if we were able to bond our transportation benefit district annual revenues, we could move these projects up in time. There are seventeen projects here, seven of which are funded under the Transportation Benefit District. The rest are being funded either through grants or pursued with partnerships with other entities. The ones that are transportation benefit district funding are the Hipkins Road Project, right in the middle, number thirteen, fourteen, fifteen, and sixteen as um and those are, those are part of our connectivity so that when people want to get from the north side of the city to the south side of the city to the different attributes we have there, they now have a safe well, safe way to to get there. Um, fourteen, fifteen is on one hundred and twelfth street, sixteen is on Interlocken. That brings us down to the new new roundabout at Interlocken. Number one, which was our biggest one, um was yet to be determined if we'd have full funding. Now we have full funding. It's moving forward and it's under construction, and that's Washington Boulevard. Number three, Nianta, that is now fully funded using TBD grant funds. Number ten and number seventeen to up above Nianta, and that is Mount Tacoma as well as the three roads, which we euphemistically characterize as our flux capacitor because they all run together. Um, those are fully funded and under design right now. So the projects, and number four, by the way, the very bottom of your screen on Union, um, we've now successfully pursued grant funds to build sidewalks on the south side. You should call that the southeast side of Union. The one light green one that says WASDOT, W-S-D-O-T, is a project that they have been working on in partnership with us for quite some time. And their plan right now is to initiate uh the bidding process for it at the end of twenty twenty-three. They're a little bit behind by six months because of funding issues that they're they're working through. But that will give us a shared use path that connects that part of our city down to Silicon Woodbrook area safely up to the new improvements that we have been constructing around Gravely Lake to get into uh the downtown core as well as connects to sidewalks that are already pre-exist on uh Pacific Highway up to the Sounder Station Hospital. There are a couple of projects here that have not yet been able to secure a hundred percent funding. We have Custer Road, number eleven on the top, and we have the Hundredth Street project, number seven um off to the right of your screen as well as the signal, number eight off of South Tacoma Way. Those are projects we continue to struggle to find funding for from other entities, other agencies. But we continue to move forward and do try. Two projects down below, number five and number six, McCord Drive as well as Forty-seventh Avenue. Those projects look to be fully funded in a different way. We've been working with Sound Transit for a couple of years now. They have forty-seven million dollars dedicated for improvements to riders, um servicing riders to the Sounder Station. So when they came to us and they said, what do you think would improve the service here? We proposed a series of projects because we think it will provide a better means for people to walk, bicycle, to skateboard and or to generally get to the Sounder Station, and they've agreed to this list of them. Now, there's two different tiers. The first tier of projects, which is likely to go forward, no problems, and we are positioning ourselves to do the design and construction management on those projects include Kendrick, which is the purple, then one hundred and twelfth street between Bridgeport and Gravely Lake Drive, a short stub off of one hundred and fifteenth street southwest, which is the light blue, which bisects right at Bridgeport Way towards the station. That will include the Sound Transit building a shared use path within Sound Transit right-of-way to get into the backside of the station by using the elevator and the skybridge that was constructed by the city a number of years ago at the end of Kendrick Street. They're also looking to fund in their Tier Two Forty-seventh Avenue Southwest improvements because this goes to and connects to the lower income areas through the bridge, the footbridge, it goes up to Spring Brook Park, as well as some of the lower income housing off of Forty-seventh area. We've also got a very small project here on Clover Creek Drive that is within there right-of-way and will connect to some additional work that we will do. That will get the Hilltop neighborhood down on Two Pack Highway where they can walk or bicycle up to the Sounder Station. There's a series of additional projects down here, McCord Drive, San Francisco, and um Lincoln Avenue, I think this one's Lincoln Avenue right here. Oh, no, let me look that. Yep, Lincoln Avenue. Those are in the Tier One, and then the Tier Two projects, which will be built should funding become available or make sure they have enough funding. And I'm pretty confident right now based on our cost estimates as well as the cost estimates for projects that Sound Transit proposes to build, that there will be funding to do the vast majority of those too. So that's been a very satisfying partnership with them, and I think what has helped is the work that we did with their money to bring folks into the backside of the station on one hundred and eleventh, one hundred and twelfth street. Uh, we actually turned back money to them because we were able to do it more cost effectively than what even we had predicted uh at the time of the planning. So here's just some examples. Uh, Phillips Road sidewalks, if you haven't been out there, this is what people used to have to walk on. This is now what they have to walk on, and there is a bicycle lane that's been installed too. This is during construction. This is on on Silicon Boulevard. This is the Safe Routes to Schools project where we now have a safe way for kids to get from Phillips to the um middle school and the elementary school. This is an aerial drone shot while it was still under construction of the roundabout at Veterans Drive and Gravely Lake Drive. It took us a little while to get the utility companies to get off that pole uh because they had to do a a series of new poles to get through this intersection so that we could get it completed. Under construction, this is Gravely Lake Drive and Washington Boulevard. You can see there's a significant departure from what used to be where the road would be, right by the liquid water district. That is now a grassy area. There's no longer a slip lane. So if you've been through there, hopefully you can appreciate and agree with me that it's a much greatly uh improved intersection. And we did keep the Love is Blossom in the middle with uplighting and some trees and vegetation. On the Onyx Drive area, this is a little bit older project, and I just do want to highlight because it shows the shared use path on the opposite side of the street from there, from where these gentlemen are working, putting the crosswalk and in the sidewalk. And this is what we tied into with the Phillips Road Phillips Road sidewalk. Veterans Drive, you probably see me talking about this from time to time because it is so transformative. It took that neighborhood from the right-hand side, which there was no curve, no gutter, pretty lousy shoulder areas, road was not in great condition, and it transforms it into a shared use path uh on one side, sidewalk on the other, landscaping, roundabouts to slow people down, radar feedback sign, et cetera. It's quite a nice project. The Liquid Drive project is just essentially um new road and sidewalks. I call these with my staff, I call on the left-hand side where the the paint marks are, I call these gold paths. Um, I look for those as I drive around the city because that's an indication of a need. That tells us where people are trying to get from point A to point B, and they're using it so much, they basically created a path that um they rely on. So what's what are we doing in the next year as far as improving overall services in addition to all that work we're doing? We requested increased funding for street light repairs and maintenance. When the city installed and did a massive redo of streetlights to go to LEDs, we're reaching that point in time where we have to start looking very carefully at uh failure rates and how much money we now need to spend in order to keep up with those that are failing. We've improved all of our systems on streetlights, the streetlight repairs. We now have contracts with a private electrical company to help us. We have contract with Pierce County uh street maintenance to help us. We have a contract with um the town of Silicon, have had that for about a year and a half so that we have multiple ways to get streetlights repaired in a reasonable timeframe. Uh, when I first started looking at this when I got here, we had uh a list of burned out streetlights, or as long as you're harmed, and they have been out for a while. Our goal now is to have streetlights repaired within thirty days of being notified of them. Because of all of the new sidewalks, new roads, new shared use path, we've also requested an increase in funding for street sweeping. And nothing's worse than building something that looks nice for a while, and then you don't take care of it and it looks terrible. So we're going to be street sweeping the shared use path on a more regular basis um and also the roads. We also needed to increase funding for storm system maintenance because as we build these new roads, we're building more robust treatment systems. And so our funding that we had in the past was not sufficient, so that's being increased. And two final things, um, we have school zone lights that are that are monthly paying to us because they're older. In some cases, we're calling them back together with parts from other systems that have been taken out because they they just didn't fully function. So we requested funding. All the school zone lights will now be replaced with a system that will allow us to troubleshoot from the office, reprogram from the office. It's safer for our staff, employees, and it also makes us more nimble for changes from the school district. And they say, hey, we've got these special vents. Can you change the school zone lights and the and the the signage? And we can do that quickly instead of having to send somebody out in the field with a ladder to climb up on it to try and get it to work. Um, we've also requested funding and we received approval for funding to replace all of our signal controllers for this for the um traffic signals. We now use Pierce County for our signal maintenance. Our system is different from their system. Uh, some of our signal controllers are very old, and again, you're trying to repair them with parts you may have from other systems that were taken out for some reason. So we're going to swap all of them out with new systems that Pierce County uses, make them much easier, more cost effective for us as well as um Pierce County. On the sanitary sewers, I mentioned earlier that there were three projects we submitted to Pierce County for ARPA funding, and we did get uh funding for all three of them, and there it's a fifty-fifty. So we get fifty percent of their of their money from ARPA and we use our funds too. The completed projects, first off, that we have done in the last couple of years, though it's not all that important to some, it is something important to us, is the Forest Silicon Park. We installed a sewer lift station in there because Parks wanted to put in a uh new bathroom by the dog park. So we did that. We also connected the other existing facilities out there to this sewer system, and it's a pump system that goes out to Pierce County on Silicon Boulevard. And then we completed the Northborne Lane Sewer Extension as well as the Maple Street Sewer Extension. The three that we're going to get funding for are shown here as one, two, and three, Rose Road and Forest Road. That's under design right now. Wazworth Street, Silicon Cox Drive, Both Street will be, that will be under design next year. And then the Grant Avenue and Orchard Street will be designing that in a couple of years. So six, we were successful in getting fifty percent of those costs, those project costs. One last thing I want to just mention to you, if you may or may not be aware of it, is we're also looking at engineering alternatives to help us either stop, block, or alleviate the anticipated hundred-year flood out of Clover Creek. We analyzed the flood plain a couple of years ago because we thought, well, that's that's too big. It's, we've never seen that. And we discovered through our analysis using consultants and more robust modeling techniques that in fact the hundred-year flood plain was significantly larger than what had been presented to and adopted by FEMA. Um, the I-five corridor area, Pack Highway, Bridgeport, that was all predicted to be the five-hundred-year flood and not very much. Um, our analysis shows in fact it is the hundred-year flood that we will in fact be looking at anywhere from two to three feet of water across I-five. Pack Highway will be shut down, Bridgeport will be shut down. And all these side streets will also be flooded and shut down. This has a pretty significant impact on our transportation system. Uh, we convened a group of um state agencies and local agencies to help us go through and look at what kind of engineering solutions we might have available to us. And we're completing that right now. We've had a couple of public outreach events. And I'd like to say that they were extremely well attended. We sent out almost seven hundred individual notices, all the property owners who are likely going to be affected in this area one way or another. And we get about thirteen, fourteen people to show up, unfortunately. But the good news is we do have some engineering solutions. The bad news is, if you want to call it bad news, is they're in the twenty to twenty-five million dollar range. The bad news is, if you want to call it bad news, is they're in the twenty to twenty-five million dollar range. Um, seems like a pretty small amount of money to spend to solve this magnitude of a problem. We are not set up to accept I five levels of traffic to our community. And that unfortunately is what I think many people will be doing, is jumping off I five at Gravel Lake Drive and I twelve, and then pouring through our community, and we are just not able to handle that. At that point, this point, I'd like to go ahead and stop and answer any questions you may have.
Thank you. Um, any questions?
Paul, first off, awesome work so far, you guys have a lot on your docket. You guys have bitten off a ton and accomplished so much. Uh, thank, I don't think I've seen as much get done uh, in the last fifteen years as I've seen in the last two years. And so uh, I don't know if that's just a, a, a fire going or the funding, but um, thanks for all the hard work on it. The, there's two, two areas that with the work that's been done, I, I'm, I'm wondering if we're, if there's a spot where we go back and say, is this working as well as we intended, and if not, what do we do? And you probably have some thoughts on a couple of areas because, you know, you design them and, and sometimes they don't always work quite as anticipated. I'm curious if you have any, what you, what you're thinking and how you'd revisit those. The two that kind of um, I haven't been able to figure out yet are the um, Thorn Lane exit and how it connects on to the freeway and puts you basically back onto uh, the Berkeley exit, you know, that exit as it comes on, and that may be a larger transportation issue with the state than with you. But how that ties in, it used to be that all the people from Silicon could have two exits, and now they're all bottlenecked into one, which happens to be the same one, which only has one lane, and it all feeds into the uh, um, joint base. And so now instead of having two valves, there's only one, and it bottlenecks with all of those folks. And so I'm kind of curious if there's any ideas on how we could, and I've heard several people toss out ideas, but I'm sure you'd have a lot better ones than the folks I talked to. Uh, then the, the other one that uh, kind of stands out is that one um, off of Gravel Lake, and that's going in towards town, and it's the first roundabout there. The roundabout looks great and, and is really helped in many ways. Um, but that exit, uh, the, the far right lane exits out and is a required exit, and I know there's still a little bit of work going on there. But it look, I, it still seems to be confusing to some people. Um, I, I think everyone who lives there knows which lane to be in, but those who don't, don't, and it uh, seems to be really confusing. And so you see them, you know, right, like, you know, cutting people off left and right, trying to figure out which way to go and, and how to navigate it. And I think the locals have figured it out, and so the learning curve is done, n- now how do we try and make it work better? I don't know, I do know that that white line is um, like a do not cross line. And I don't know if you know what I'm talking about, but there's two lanes going in and two lanes coming out, and there's a do not cross line that extends quite a bit of the ways in, and I see that going towards the freeway and coming away from the freeway right before and after the uh, um, and, and maybe we could shorten that, that do not cross lane up because I see a lot of people competing to cross over real quick to get, go south on I five or go north on I five. So anyhow, those are the two that kind of stick out, I, I don't know if I explained them well enough, if, but if you even know where I'm talking about, but hopefully that makes sense.
I know exactly where you're talking about.
You're the man.
Thank you, I know exactly what you're talking about, let's take the easy one first. To me, the easy one is Nyanza Roundabout, and it's easy because it's under our control. Uh, we've already had a couple of people comment um, about the hazard of people using the roundabout from, let's say the Veterans Drive direction, and they're coming into the roundabout and they want to go up Nyanza. And as they come through, they have the right of way. But we have two lanes coming in from the south, and the, and the traffic in the left-hand lane, understand because they could see the car coming, but when they're parked, when they're, when they're not parked, but when they're stopped there, they can block the view of the car that's coming on their right and wants to sweep into Nyanza. So the simple answer is it meets the standards, the right answer is we're looking at that to see how we can improve that. Um, the other part you were talking about is people not understanding when they're coming into the roundabout from the, from the Veterans Drive direction that when they come into the roundabout, they need to be in the left-hand side in order to continue through the roundabout to get up to the freeway and to head north. And you want to be in the right-hand side to get to the freeway to head south. So we're gonna be taking a look at those and see what additional signage we can put up further back to help people understand how they need to be positioned with their vehicle as they're using the roundabout, coming in and going out in all directions. The other one you mentioned was the Thorn and um, Berkeley, Berkeley, thank you, I apologize, I was, I was just so focused on Thorn. When you're coming southbound, you have to know which lane to be in in order to take the Thorn Lane exit. The Thorn Lane exit is a little bit strange because you actually turn left to go across the freeway, that'll bring you around to the roundabout, to take you back across the freeway to get to the roundabout and go to Thorn Lane. So there is in fact a means to get there, you just need to understand that. And then if you don't hit that, then you take the main, main line, I mean, guess you will, um, lane that takes you all the way down to Berkeley, and you get off in Berkeley. All of that was designed and built by the State Department of Transportation. So we really didn't have any say at all, and that, that came about through their design-build process. So the contractor um, who was successful, Atkinson, in winning the work, actually pitched that to the State Department of Transportation. They reviewed it and decided that it, it made sense and that uh, economically saving so money, so money, so they moved forward with that. Um, the best I can do is contact the state and say, hey, we're getting some concerns that your signage may not be quite sufficient for people to understand how to get to Thorn Lane when you're hitting south on I fives.
Thanks, and, and hopefully I'm not overstating, but the, I think if you, once you're in the community and you, let's say you accidented in or you're intentionally there to get out, if you tried to exit out, you would exit back over the freeway, go all the way back around, and you're really just getting right back onto a lane that takes you right to an intersection that stops. It doesn't actually get you on the interstate, you go down one more exit.
Right.
And then you're just uh, at the same exit still, and then you're really hopping on I five, one more stop down. And so everyone's basically funneling into that, and there's only one lane that gets you down there from, from um, Silicon. And so that's all of the, you know, the um, reserve there, it's the uh, it, it, it just seems to be during the peak hours, a bit of a problem. And um, and I also, whenever I go through that area, find that there is one exit that's either closed or blocked, or some big semis turn too wide or straddling a roundabout because they don't know where they're going. And they'll, they'll figure that out, but um, it, it, I, I, I think it would be, that would be one that I would love to see them revisit, and I just think there, it, it feels like there's too much bottleneck, every time I've been through that, it, it seems to be really slow.
I, I can, I can talk to them about, to be honest with you, the amount of money, the time, and therefore the wind to that, they will not be changing anything for a very long time, so we're all gonna learn how to, how to use this system and use it effectively.
I, and, and I, I can appreciate where you're coming from, I think the same thing's true for the state as the city is, once we do a big, a big project, we gotta go back and see, does it work as intended? I, I know I've got an engineer sitting next to me, and um, it, that's the same boat we're in all the time as we look at a project, we think of how it should work, and then we do it. And then we look a couple of years later to see, did it work like we thought? And um, oftentimes it doesn't, and um, so we can, you know, take our licks and learn and, and move on, and, but hopefully we can make some adjustments as we need, and again, great job on all the projects. You've had a ton of stuff on your plate, and you've knocked out a ton of cool things.
There was one thing I forgot to mention, I think you might find of interest as a commission, that is the non-motorized plan update. Um, the, our current non-motorized plan was developed in two thousand and nine. We have a consultant working with us right now on updating it, and they're updating specific sections because a lot of the non-motorized plan is still solid. And there's no sense going out there and basically rewriting something uh, just so you can say that it's a complete redo. It does not need a redo, it needs an update. We've had, um, we've done the public outreach, we did a survey, online survey. We're presenting all that information to the city council on Monday night. What's not a surprise is the areas that people ask us to focus on through the public outreach and survey. They say they want better connectivity. Well, as you saw on the presentation, that's exactly what we're intending on doing. We need better connectivity, having a neighborhood sidewalk that goes nowhere, it just serves your neighborhood, is not really helping the community, it's not robust. That's why we developed a sidewalk connectivity plan, and we've been pitching that to council, and they understand it. The other thing, other than connectivity, is more sidewalks. They want more sidewalks and more means to get around the community. And again, it aligns exactly what we've been proposing to city council, what we've been proposing to the grant agencies, and we've been helping to understand that when we're looking at our non-motorized, as well as our motorized connections through the city, we're not doing it um, with our eyes half open. We're doing it with a plan, we're doing it because we recognize that these components we're pitching fit into a greater cloth, a whole cloth, and that's what we're trying to craft together. Once we have the complete non-motorized uh, plan pulled together, and we have all the sidewalks making the connections, and we're appropriate either a shared use path or a bike lane or a share-o, which we're not hugely favor of, once we have that built, then we can start talking about how we expand it out, build the rest of the system. But we've got over a hundred million dollars of need right now, and we're whittling away on it every day. So I just want to make sure you're aware that, that we are doing that, and I have more raised plan update, and it's, uh, we expect to have that done, fully completed to council um, in February.
Thank you. Any other questions, Mr. Wagon?
Yeah, I, I have a couple, I, you know, I, I agree with Phil, I think you guys have done a good job with a whole lot of this stuff, and I'm, you know, I'm very encouraged. You know, I watched when we, the city put in all the traffic signals, and I'm glad to see them come out, and we got the roundabouts. It seems like they make a lot more sense. Um, I'm, I down, I drive down uh, Washington all the time, so I'm a little concerned now with roundabouts multiple places along there, that, that's been a thirty-five mile an hour street. Is it still gonna be thirty-five, or you're gonna, is it gonna get throttled back?
Um, if it does, it'll only get throttled back to thirty miles an hour. The, when we were, I hate to say the directed, but told that we wanted a Boulevard look with a center median, to make it work there, we really need to put the roundabouts in. What we find consistently, that when we go do a major road improvement like on Veterans, the first complaint we get, a consistent complaint, is people speeding. Because let's face it, we're all human, it's a nice straight road, it's great pavement, great surface, and we just tend to gradually creep up in speed. When we put these roundabouts in and strategically locate them, it slows people down. The complaints that we get after Veterans completion was from Lake City Boulevard, which is where we put the roundabout. And the roundabout was put in there on purpose to slow people down before they get into the business section, as well as before they get down to American Lake Park. The other two roundabouts that we put in are, were put in basically because those, those side streets, those angles, they're horrible. I used to, I grew up in Liquid, I used to ride my bike down Vernon up to American Lake Park many years ago. When I started driving, I knew that you had to go down Vernon to get on the Veterans, you were craning your neck around behind you to see if it was safe, you can make a turn there. So those two roundabouts were to improve the, the geometry of those intersections. From Lake City Boulevard to Gravel Lake Drive is where we're consistently getting complaints about, about people speeding. We've got radar feedback signs in. Those who are gonna obey the speed limit, when they see that and they're going fast, they're gonna slow down. Those who are going to blow through the speed limit because they gotta get somewhere because they're so important, they're gonna speed. The roundabouts on Washington Boulevard are gonna do a couple of different things. They're gonna slow people down, they're gonna make it safer for the side streets to come into and out of this, um, this, the neighborhoods. They're gonna make it safer for non-pedestrians, um, excuse me, non-motorized, I should say not pedestrian, for pedestrians and cyclists to get across the road, to get across all the intersections. Thirty-five miles an hour now, now, um, if it does drop, it will drop to thirty miles an hour. Similarly, on Hipkins, the, the, the road with the chicanes that really don't slow anybody down because at the time you're speaking about learning from our mistakes in the past, those chicanes really don't slow people down. So majority of those are coming out, um, and we're proposing to put in a roundabout on North Star, I think it's North Star Way, it's the only place we can put one in because those roads do not line up uh, when it were, when those neighborhoods were built. But it's an effective means to slow people down, that road may also drop to thirty miles an hour. Um, I'm a little hesitant to just drop the speed limit to slow people down, because what it really does is it results in a lot more people now violating the speed limit, especially if it's an area that they're used to doing the speed at. We'll see um, as we get closer to the completion where Washington Boulevard is gonna stay thirty-five and what's gonna drop to thirty.
Okay, well, I, I appreciate those comments, you, you know, I mean, we've all watched Hipkins, and uh, you know, there was, they put those little curves in there to call, you know, traffic calming, you know, because it was a straight road, and, and certainly people went pretty fast along there. But I know some people, it, their way to um, rebel was to see how fast they can go through the traffic calming curves, right?
Yeah, yeah, you're exactly right.
And, and, and so there was some things along there that, you know, didn't make sense. You know, when you have a school bus going along there, or you have the mailman going along there, um, Hipkins becomes a, a bit of a problem. Um, so, you know, I, I don't know what all the right answers are. Um, so basically, when you, on the map, you said there were some things gonna be done at Hipkins. It's, it's really roundabout issues that you're talking about then is what's gonna happen, or are you gonna do something different?
Hipkins, we're proposing, there's only one location for a roundabout that would fit. And we're gonna be pitching that to council on Monday night. We're, we're walking council through the thirty percent plans of the Hipkins, the Angle, Elwood, eighty-seventh, potential new roundabout for the park. So we're walking them through all of that and getting their feedback. Um, I am gonna recommend that we put a roundabout in there to help slow people down. Um, we're also gonna be putting in radar feedback signs. One of the other tools that we have at, to use is speed tables, basically raised crosswalks. The challenge we have is, is that you don't want to put a speed table in on roads at thirty-five miles an hour because now it becomes a hazard to cars and trucks, because people still don't see those. We have one in, um, at least one in on Onyx with radar feedback signs, and it's well marked. And people still hit it at speed. We hear about that, they should be going slower, and that road is not posted thirty-five miles an hour from my recollection. So we, we have to be careful where we put certain tools in because we can't create additional liability for the community if someone were to get injured, because we use a tool in a location that really wasn't safe to use it.
Okay, um, my next question goes to when you were talking about the floodplain. Um, you know, it, it looked like, you know, the whole freeway is gonna get shut down, what, what's the probability of that happening?
So the, it's a good question. Um, it's a hundred-year flood, so what does a hundred-year flood mean? I, I personally, I've spent thirty years of my career in water resources before coming to the city. And I've been, I've dealt with flooding Pierce County, Tacoma, Federal Way, Bellevue, uh, King County. Flooding is not fun, but the best way to describe it is, it's, it's got a one percent probability. Flooding is not fun, but the best way to describe it is it's it's got a one percent probability. One percent, it's not much. It's like one percent every year that you're gonna have a flow of that magnitude. That magnitude has not yet occurred on Clover Creek, yet. Um, that doesn't mean that every year that the probability goes up. It's like statistics, right? You can torture statistics to tell you any answer you want it if you know how to use statistics. But it's still a one percent probability. That means that you could get one this year, one more next year, one more the year after that. The probability of those occurring so close together um grows. Because of the way statistics works. So one percent probability, hundred-year flood, however you wanna characterize it. What we have to look at is, what are the impacts if that does happen? If it happens, our current fiscal analysis says it would be about a hundred and twenty million dollar impact to the community. Um, if we build a twenty, twenty-five million dollar project, do it once. Then depending upon where you build the project at, I don't wanna give too much away, but it's basically a levy system. Then you can reduce the amount of community impact to two, three million dollars, two to three million dollars. What concerns me the most, in addition to, I can't say the most, but I am concerned about properties and the residents that will be flooded. The businesses that will be flooded, the impacts to them, the fact that people will not be able to get around. But I find when it shuts down for two, three weeks, because that water has to drain out. And it drains out primarily to infiltration. And that area has a high groundwater table, which means it's probably not gonna drain out very fast. All of that traffic is gonna come through us. Emergency services to this area will be severely impacted. Um, the ability of emergency services to get to a hospital will be severely impacted. Um, if we have I-5 traffic pouring through our community, our traffic systems are not set up to that degree. And today, everyone will just look at their phone and say, oh, Google Maps or Waze or whatever app you're using tells me to go this way. So we would likely see cars running through quiet neighborhoods as they're trying to find the best way to get back onto I-5. Or five twelve. That's, that's kind of what makes me wake up at night saying, well, we can ignore this and hope it doesn't happen in our lifetimes. Or, to me, the more responsible action is, let's recognize it. Let's figure out how to solve it, and then let's pursue the funding and the permits necessary to do it. There's always a probability or possibility we're gonna get a greater flood than a than a hundred-year, one percent flood, you bet. But at least we can take care of the flood that we're regulated to, required to have a response to, that's the hundred-year flood.
Well, thank you, that was, that was a reasonable answer, I like that one. You you know, there's certain things you can't do anything about, I mean, I-5 has been shut down before when Mount St. Helens blew its top and, you you know, I. I mean, we as human beings, we're not gonna overcome nature all the time, you know, but but I I appreciate your answer because. Um, you know, are there some things you can do to mitigate things? And certainly, you know, people wanna get their children to a hospital or their senior citizen to a hospital. You know, I think those things need to be brought in there. Um, two, two last things, the other one. Nianza, when, 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 when do you think Nianza is gonna get done? Because we compete with the University of Place, they have their Chambers Bay Walk. Uh, but we're gonna have the Gravel Lake walk-around. Um, and it, the sidewalks you've got in there now look wonderful and and it's a great place for people to walk. And the the only negative I see is there's no place to park, and the one place we do have to park, they keep locking the gates up. Uh, so I don't understand why they put the gates on there or if there was a reason, you know, by um, what is it?
Gardens.
Wait, what's, Lake Wald?
Lake Wald Gardens. So let me, let me, let me tell you a little bit about that. First off, to answer your question, um, the plan is to design in twenty twenty-four and construction in twenty twenty-five. For Nianz, and it it's funded. That's the most important thing, it's funded. Um, and to be able to look out a number of years for a project like that and say, yeah, we have a plan, we have funding, is pretty, pretty exciting, pretty phenomenal. So, why is that parking lot in front of Lake Wald Gardens? I'll tell you why it's in front of Lake Wald Gardens. Because when we were looking at this and we're saying, you know what, when we're done, we're gonna have a a shared use path that circumvents all the way around Gravel Lake Drive. Goes all the way down to American Lake Park and all the way down uh Washington Boulevard. There are a lot of people who I've heard who who like to jog around Gravel Lake Drive, but it's very, very dangerous, so they get very nervous. So, let's put in a parking area and we have lots of room. Let's do it in front of Lake Wald Gardens because you know what, they have big events that they like to park on the grass, which is all within the right of way. So how about if we put in the parking area here? Lake Wald Gardens, you take care of all the plants and everything to make it look nice because frankly, you're gonna have the best bang for the buck, if you will, out of that. We'll provide the initial upfront money for the, for the plant material, but you plant them, you you take care of them. If you want to change it seasonally, go for it, that's fine. We have an agreement that has yet to go to council, it's taken us a while to get through it, but that's basically what we've got structured. Um, why are there gates out there? Because we're concerned that this doesn't become a homeless encampment location. So, what we did on the design, we have two parking areas, if you look at it. We have a small parking area that is basically opened up every day. And that's for anybody who wants to go and park there and walk around the lake or go to Lake Wald Gardens and they've got some overflow needs. The bigger parking area right now is is closed until we have the need, okay? So I think we're gonna have a need. Um, I've been kind of, you know, first off, I'm an engineer, I'm not responsible for artwork. But I think it'd be pretty awesome if that entire circuit around the lake had different stations of of traveling art. That Lake Wald Gardens has said they wanna be the cultural center for our community with art and music as well as the garden. That's their vision. Well, if they can encourage artists to come in and start putting up art on the complete walk around that lake. So now what we're looking at, like three miles where people could come in, park there, exercise, walk, go to Lake Wald Gardens, walk around the whole thing, seeing uh different art. Um, that's out there, and I I I call it that because I go through Aberdeen, Port Angeles, other communities in my travels. And I see how those communities have incorporated art into their transportation network, into their downtown areas. Their ex, their outdoor pieces of art, some of them are permanent, some are not. And as a visitor to those communities, I find it fascinating. And I appreciate it. I'm hoping Lakewood can see something like that, some value in that, whether that's what they do here. Or whether we just use the parking area for mini triathlons where you run them down, the shared use path to American Lake Park. And then up Washington Boulevard, loop around the lake and back into the, to this area. So, there was no place else we could put something to park. This wasn't uh the best place. City Council agreed to it, so we built it.
Well, thank you very much, I I really appreciated your briefing tonight and I'm very encouraged by what I see, thank you.
Thank you.
Anything else?
Take it back on a couple of things, first of all, as has been said, this place looks great. And you all have done a great job these past couple of years. And especially the the safety aspect of it for our children, the the sidewalks around, around schools. Uh, again, I thank you for that. Let me take it back on another thing uh regarding Nianza, Nianza Drive, Nianza Road. So, Nianza, I mean, Avenue, corridor between I-5 and downtown. You would think that that would have been one of the areas where emphasis would have been placed initially. But gravelly was done instead. And and as I was told, it was, we wanted to increase both pedestrian and vehicle traffic from Lake City. We wanted to make that a thoroughfare and, and so my question is, did that work? Have we in fact, and how do you measure it, have we in fact seen an increase in both vehicles, pedestrians from Lake City to downtown? And that's why we went first, even though Nianza is a much more frequented, used thoroughfare? Was it worth it?
So, that's a good question. Um, I started in twenty eighteen, so some of those projects were before my time. But I will tell you that for the Veterans Drive project. The city pushed for and received over two million dollars in state allocations for improving that community down there. We also got money for building the rest of it. Sometimes these projects are, they're driven by where the money is. Okay, and the, why did we do Gravel Lake Drive and Washington Boulevard first, as opposed to Nianza? Well, because there was federal monies that we wanted to go after. And we decided that the Washington Boulevard connection to North Gate. And then that connection to I-5. And made the most sense, it was the only one that we could go after for that pot of money. It was a new pot of money that City of Lakewood instrumental in getting creative at the federal level and then funded. Um, so we turned on a dime, we did over three miles worth of design, it had to be shovel-ready, we did it in five and a half months. That's phenomenal, gentlemen. That we hired a consultant, we turned and burned and we got that thing ready and we got our application in in five and a half months for three and a half miles of roadway, complete redesign. I thought we had an outstanding stellar application. Where things kind of fell off, fell apart is the. Department of Defense was allowed or or, I don't know if allowed is the right word to say it, but they created the grant application. They had the ultimate decision on what they wanted to fund. No, no transportation projects got funded. Community centers got funded, libraries and schools got funded. But our project did not get funded the first time or the second time we applied for it. But we did successfully bring home seven million dollars of TIP grant funds to help us on that project. The Nianza Road project, it's not a viable grant project. There isn't a grant out there that would fund it for us, that's a, trying to remember, three and a half million dollar project. So the city manager, our finance director, a deputy city manager now, Todd Kraus, put their heads together and said, hey. If we are able to bond our TBD funds, then with what we also have have set aside, we can fund seventeen million dollars worth of projects. And that's when we started talking with council about what other projects that we would like to build that basically are not grant-eligible. No one's gonna fund them, Hipkins no one's gonna fund, Idlewild, no one's gonna fund that, no one's gonna fund uh our quote flex capacitor. Those funding agencies are looking for areas where there's significant traffic accidents, fatalities, don't have them there. They're looking for areas that are gonna be uh generators of new trips. Well, that, those are businesses primarily, so residential neighborhoods don't score well at all. And there's no schools. So, projects be selected, the top seven projects for the TBD grant funds are ones that there's no other way to fund them other than we fund them ourselves. And Nianza was one of them. Now, Nianza did not get built earlier primarily because. Everybody who drives that corridor on the other side of the lake has been putting up with traffic for three, four years, impacts, construction impacts. We wanna give them a little bit of a bre, a breather. Plus, we wanna make that connection north-south from Idlewild, Hipkins, et cetera, get that completed too. So, that's why, that's why it didn't get built a while ago, that's why it's a little, a couple more years out. But the encouraging news is it's funded, we're gonna design it, we're gonna build it. You will see it.
Thank you, I appreciate that explanation, thank you.
Sorry if I'm a little bit long-winded, but I do want you to understand everything that goes into these decisions.
And then I have a couple of questions. Um, so, on on one of the maps, um, it it showed all of the pedestrian routes and and the roads. Is Silicon, after these new sidewalks and the retaining wall and whatnot, is there gonna be a, an ADA compliant route um all the way out now?
Yes, it will.
Okay, great. Um, and then uh also on Silicon, so Western State, you know, what phase have they completed a TIA? And do we know what kind of traffic mitigation's gonna come? Are they gonna have to put in a turn lane and or a two-way turn lane or something? And widen that out when they do their project or what kind of, what are you anticipating for frontage improvements?
So right now, their frontage improvements are gonna be curb, gutter, and sidewalk the entire length from Eighty-seventh down to Far West. Um, they're proposing that the current traffic signal at Cirque Drive, Circle Drive. That be taken out and moved down to the Chapel Gate entrance will become one of their main entrances going into their new, new facility. That will have its own dedicated left turn pocket coming in, out. Um, the Circle Drive right now will be converted to a right-in, right-out only. So if you're coming out Circle Drive, you will not be allowed to turn left uh because then you'll be going oppose, opposing traffic. You have too mu, too much chance of a T-bone accident there. And then they're looking at another entrance, um, I think it's. I think it's called Sentinel Drive further down, closer to Eighty-seventh, that uh the next phase of work will move back. Um, similarly, that would either be a right-in, right-out only or they will put a signal there, I can't remember off the top of my head. But we have, we have analyzed all their TIA.
Okay, thanks. Um, and then a couple other, uh, we were talking about um the the new roundabout at um. Gravel Lake in Washington, and I I I frequent that, um, that's, I come back and forth to my in-laws every day. And uh, so, the, the, the lighting um that illuminates the artwork, the whatever the thing is, the flower thing in the middle. Yeah, it, it looks like headlights um as you're heading, um, I guess westbound and kind of going on to um Washington. And so I don't know if there's a way to change the angle or or block it so it doesn't, it it just is, it's a little bit deceiving when you're entering at nighttime. Because it's, there's a lot of lights that are looking a lot like headlights.
Interestingly enough, I was just talking to the mayor as I was leaving City Hall uh today. And I told him that we in fact needed to do something about that uplighting because I had experienced the exact same thing you're talking about. So I'll be talking to our design engineer who's still active on that project to see. I wanna put some, um, basically it's a shroud, it's a shield, so it directs light just at the um arc. And it shields it from the driver's eyes as they're coming around.
Great.
Your spot on, yeah.
Um, and then, uh, you know, just getting more connectivity and more frontage improvements. Um. I think we now have, uh, I don't know if we have it now, I guess. Um, are we allowed to have two ADUs on each lot? Is that?
It's gonna depend on the lot size and uh for generally speaking, no, it's one.
Just one, okay, isn't that, is the state going to that or wanting to go to that?
Not that I'm aware of.
Okay, never mind, I don't know what I was uh thinking. Never mind then, I don't have a comment on that one. So that's it for me, uh, great presentation, thanks for, yeah, all the information and you guys are doing, doing great work, so keep it up.
Thank you, appreciate it, enjoy the rest of your evening.
Yep. Does that conclude our new business?
Uh, no, I still have my presentation.
Okay.
That was a lengthy one from Mr. Bucic, but I'll try to make this quick. Uh, so, to tie everything together then that you've heard from your two presenters prior. Um, we are talking about the transportation element for the comprehensive plan update. And what you heard from Ms. Underwood Goltman was the the regional level analysis that they're gonna ultimately do. They'll take a look at the final version of the comprehensive plan changes related to transportation in particular. And and determine whether they are consistent with the GMA, consistent with uh the regional planning policies that they promulgate. And then also the county-wide planning policies that are adopted uh with input by the cities, by Pierce County. And then the other thing that will happen is, should anybody want to challenge anything that's in? And then the other thing that will happen is, should anybody want to challenge anything that's in the comp plan update, they're able to take it on to the hearing examiner. But regarding transportation, the way it's discussed in, I'm sorry, to finish my thought. The presentation that you heard from Mr. Bucic was basically to show you that in recent years in particular, there's been significant improvements on both the motorized and non-motorized systems within the city. And so all of that needs to be incorporated into the new version of the comprehensive plan, because there are areas in there where things haven't been updated for almost ten years. So all of these projects on roads, as well as he mentioned briefly, the sewer and then the stormwater infrastructure, the flooding infrastructure, all of that will need to be updated as well. So in the current comprehensive plan, you've got this map here that talks about levels of service regarding transportation. And basically, E and F is what's been designated for various roadways. And that just means the amount of time basically that you're setting, sitting at a intersection or an intersection, how long the wait is, and then volumes of traffic going by a particular intersection. So those will have to be reviewed, and just the city would decide if they want to allow for a higher level of congestion or not. And then there's twenty-one goals and a hundred and six policies that also need to be reviewed and updated as needed. There's goals within the city's current transportation element. There's seven here that are listed, essentially keeping the transportation system reliable and safe, making it efficient and convenient, and reducing consumption of energy over time, enhancing options for future improvements, keeping travel times low, emphasizing movement of people and goods versus vehicles, establishing a minimum level of adequacy for the facilities, and protecting capital investment once they're made. Once you have your comprehensive plan updated with goals and policies, then there's the matter of looking at the six-year comprehensive program, which is where they actually schedule projects and try to fund those as funds become available from the various sources that are out there. Transportation element talks about requirements from the state law. I won't go into these, but as you can see, there's quite a few that need to be covered. All of these are currently in place, they just need to be updated in time for the twenty-four periodic review. We do also, of course, have two major agencies for transit within the city. So Pierce Transit has its transit center here in Town Center. And then you have Sound Transit with the Sounder Station. And that is part of actually the sub-area plan that was just adopted last year. I'm sorry. For both Pierce and Sound Transit, they are going to engage with us as we update the transportation element to make sure that we've got all their input in there, as well as the city's own perspective. Utilities, we're going to talk about next time, so I'm just going to move us through quickly. Where we're at right now, we've talked about a number of the elements that are in the comprehensive plan. Tonight was transportation. In the future, we'll be looking at the land use itself, urban design and community character. We're also going to engage one evening for the utilities. I think as you all know, City of Lakewood doesn't own its own sewer or water or power utilities, so we need to pull them and then their planning efforts into this as well. So I hope to be able to bring to you information from each of the agencies that the city works with, and you can ask questions of them at the same time. And then we'll also be looking at racially disparate impacts and equity. That's all required under the Growth Management Act now. Some of that we already talked about, if you remember back to the beginning when we started by talking about housing, and the equity issues, and the, the way the city population lives in various spots with different economic reality. All of that is going to be part of what is analyzed with the housing needs and housing projections. So with that, Mr. Chair, I'll stop. And just a quick note that this is the last meeting for the year for you. The next meeting will be on the fourth of January. So, we'll be just coming off the new year, don't forget. And then that evening on the fourth will be the decision by you of who you would like to have serve as your chair. So that, what will happen that night.
Mr. Mayor. So, I, I didn't, and maybe it was in there and I missed it when you were going through it. How about maintenance of our, our existing roads? You know, like chip seal and all that stuff? I didn't, I don't remember seeing anything in this last brief. Is that supposed to be in there or not?
Well, maintenance is something that is handled through that six-year transportation improvement program as well. New construction and then maintenance of existing systems are in part of that. This, when we're talking about the comprehensive plan, we're looking twenty years into the future. And so for the most part, it's looking at where there may be expansion. But the, every year, the city council takes a look at the needs for chip sealing or other maintenance, and they fund that or they don't fund that, depending on what's available.
I, you know, I mean, back before we had planning commission, we still had the transportation. We, we talked a lot about that, and it's, you know, once you get behind on taking care of your roads, it's a painful process. Because there's just not enough money to rebuild brand-new roads. And what, what do we, I think, what, a hundred and ninety-three miles of roads in Lakewood?
I'm not sure off the top of my head.
Something, something like that, if I remember right. And, okay, thank you.
Yep, you're welcome. That's it for me, Mr. Chair, unless you have any questions.
Any other comments on that topic? Okay, I'll move forward to reports from council, city staff, commission members. Do we have anyone from city here?
Councilmember Bokey is not here tonight, no.
Okay. And city, you guys have any?
Nope, we just finished it up for you, so January fourth.
Okay, anything else here? Well, yeah, it's been a good year, and we'll call this one done. See you guys on January fourth.
Motion to adjourn.
Yeah.